To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting has been postponed at all the normal posting places.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of the modification of moving the auditor report after delegations to be heard.
A motion and a second discussion. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Take the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, November 26th at 7:00 PM open session and Wednesday, November 28th at 6:00 PM open and closed session.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections? In all favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's passed. We're on to the financial reports and bill lists.
Okay, we're not just listening for November 21st through December 11th, 2018 from General Funds. The shops at the University, 553715 through 553716 for $1,006.20. Next, the direct deposit numbers, 00048102 through 900048208 for $138,039.46. Next, where transfers for payroll liabilities, lawyers numbers 201800135 through 201800151 for $227,435.25 cents for total payroll of $366,481.22 cents. Next, accounts payable, checks numbers 53322 through 53354 for $36,558.78 cents. Next, we have the wire transfer, 201800140 for $57.98. There are no credit card transactions. Next, PCH direct deposit numbers, 181900089 through 181900096 for $468.84 cents for total accounts payable of $37,085.60 cents for total disbursements of $403,566.92 cents.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Second, are there any questions? I just, one question that computer room, was that not worthy of submitting to our insurance company or?
We're still working through that.
Okay.
We are still working through, we're working with the Hartford Insurance Company to determine the next steps and still trying to recover those losses, so.
Any other questions? In all favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we have delegations to be heard. No one has asked to speak to us, so we will pass on that and go to our auditor.
All right. Thank you. I'm Brian Mackneck. I am a partner with Riley Penner Bennett. I'm in charge of the audit. Just want to say that we have a unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is what you're looking for. And we had full cooperation with the staff during the audit. This is probably the smoothest audit we've had since we've been doing it. Sherry's been doing a great job. As you can tell from the audit report, we had our standard significant deficiency, which is for preparation of the financial statements, because you're responsible for the financial statements. The other thing that we're supposed to do is put our opinion on it. But most people do not have the expertise to have everything in accordance with the auditing standards and for the report and have all the GASB disclosures and everything. So we prepare the financial statements. You guys review them. And then we have a second partner in our office reviewing to make sure that they're also in accordance with the common standard, so. Then we have some of the operating results. We have a decrease in the fund balances here of $5,261. You pretty much had a break even here, so. Then we have general fund. You have your fund balance. We have non-spendable, which was $43,191. We have restricted this year of $4,224. And that's common school library fund that was not spent, the full grant. And then we have unassigned fund balance of $2,836,000. So your total fund balance was at $2,879,000, which is at 30.78% of your budget. Most schools strive to be 20 to 25%. And being at that level, you really reduce your need for short-term borrowing. And you guys have not borrowed for short-term borrowing, so that will help continue that in the future. Then we have our general fund information expenditures. This is a combination of Fund 10 and 27. You budgeted $9,972 in expenses. Your actual expenses were $9,356,000. So you spent 93.83% of your budget. Then we have revenues. You budgeted $9,552,000. Actual revenue was $9,700,000. And so you received 101.56% of your budget. Then we have our debt activity. This year you have principal payments of $465,000 and total interest of $19,182,000. That debt payment for the principal paid your debt down to zero, so there was no long-term debt unless you get long-term debt in the future again for projects. Then we have the pension footnotes. On your regular fund statements, this information's not recorded, so when we do our governmental wide or GASB adjustments, we account for the pension, supplemental pension and the OEPAD. So for your pension, that's the money you have with the W of Wisconsin Retirement System. The net pension asset this year was $934,000. You have deferred outflows, which is like an asset of $2,599,000. And deferred inflows, which is like a liability of $2,841,000. So net difference is a positive $692,000. Then we have the supplemental pension. This is, you have deferred outflows of $67,669,000 and pension liability of $265,967,000. So the net is unfunded of $198,000. Then we have our OEPAD, which you have deferred outflows of $13,685,000, deferred inflows of $13,021,000, net OEPAD liability of $54,000,000. So this number has been going down every year, and I think this year is the, you plan on spending all the rest of it, so. So we did a, we did not do a federal single audit, because you have to be over 750,000 federal funds. We did do a state single audit. We did not have any findings related to that, so it was a pretty much a clean, clean up report, except for the significant deficiency for financial statements, but I would say probably 98% of our districts received that comment, so. Then we issued a management letter. This is where we note any additional items. We just want to put in there, we put in there segregation duties with such a small district, but you guys have controls in place to mitigate that. We did not feel it was a significant deficiency or material weakness. And all the other comments that we had from last year, you guys worked on cleaning those up as you have done every year, so there were no additional comments this year, which was great. We had the actuarial studies. We always put that in there when you're next, full actuarial study, which is for the year or for the period July 1st to 2019, which will be used for the June 30th to 2020 audit. And the actuarial studies with GASB 75 that came out last year, they require updated schedules every year, which you guys have been doing that, so we just want to make sure that you guys are always aware, because if you don't have those down in time for the audit, you get a qualified opinion on your audit, which you don't want that, so. Any questions for us? All right, that's all I had. Thank you. Can't queue at night, just pull this up and start reading it, so. And if you have any questions throughout the year, feel free to contact me. Sherry has my contact information. We're more than happy to discuss anything in the audit or any concerns you may have, so.
Last month, Brian, all the board members received the final audit findings and the management letters and everything that you supplied to Sherry, so we handed that on last month.
All right, good. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we are on to the district administrators' report. We've got donation, accept.
We are looking through the board to approve Mary Iwansky, won a PTG grant for intermediate school STEM programming. The funds were used for Lego Robotics Mindstorming Kits for sixth grade as well as cardboard creation materials for, is that primary? Cardboard creation? I think that was primary. So not all intermediate, but $1,000 for Lego Robotics for fifth and sixth grade and the cardboard creation was for the Makerspace at the primary schools. So just looking for a motion to approve the donations as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the donations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions? In all favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. There are no personal actions. Some information for us.
Just, well, we're turning the calendar over, and that will basically begin us looking forward to the 2019-20 school year. And Sherry grabbed the most updated Baird model, so we'll be working on all the financial projections as well as priority listings, working on staffing allotments, facility plans, and obviously we're going to be taking a look at the tenure facility plan a little later today, but ultimately the planning for 1920 has begun, so that will be our focus for the next several months, and you know, we'll come forward to it, so lots to think about for next year.
Okay, then we're on to committee reports. The student achievements committee.
Sure. On December 5th, the writing team as well as the technology teams met. The writing team continues to progress forward, working on their units of study as well as their conventions. That work will continue on in January, February. We are right on track to meet our April 1st drafting for the board to review, as well as the teacher technology standards. Basically, the tech team, we took a look at what standards we want our current staff to be able to achieve, some of those real tech standards, and then also looked at the future to say, okay, what are some of the skillsets that we want to continue to build capacity in? And we created that list, and then in the future we'll begin to take a look at this upcoming month, how we want to approach those technology standards, but how we want to bring that skillset to our staff for those who we need to continue to develop. So again, more work to happen around that area in January. As well as the student achievement committee on the 5th and the 11th met to discuss the increased possibility of some elective slash explore opportunities for our seventh and eighth grade students. A couple things, on the December 11th, the student achievement committee did present to the seventh and eighth grade staff, and a couple things that we're taking a look at is the opportunity to pull some of the required materials through state mandates from some of the core areas that we've placed them in. For instance, academic and career planning, we have placed into the literacy area, as well as looking to the future, we have academic financial literacy to really be taking a look at too. So we are looking at, right now, we have one elective period for seventh and eighth grades, so we are looking to possibly create another period anywhere between 30 and 38 minutes where students would then be able to choose different elective possibilities, as well as that is where we would require some explore opportunities for ACP, financial literacy, whether we wanted to focus on some more literacy things, but this opportunity also would present our staff with some additional prep time at the seventh and eighth grade level. Now, these electives and explore opportunities would be taught by our seventh and eighth grade teachers, so knowing that we are going to be possibly, if we choose to add elective period throughout the day, they would be teaching a class every other day to achieve that staffing level, as well as bringing in our music staff as well as our art staff to balance out that caseload for teachers. On the opposite days, they would have prep time to be able to fill that time, to hopefully try to increase a little bit of that time that has been requested through some workforce engagements, some other conversations. Unfortunately, obviously, if we add a period, something has to go, and so we've created a couple different scheduling scenarios that would basically reduce our blocks anywhere between, what is it, seven and nine minutes. And that affects, obviously, the block classes a little bit different than it does our skinnies and our singletons, such as social studies, science, FIEB, art, music, and well, Spanish too as well. So still in discussions, we did talk to our seventh and eighth grade team and asked them to please think about, reflect on what it would mean to have their content and their discipline impacted by the reduction of anywhere between three, four, or seven to nine minutes if it was a block class. So we will be following up with them a little bit later in the month of January, as we want them to kind of think about what that means for their content area as well as their discipline moving forward. So that's what the student achievement committee's been working on. Phil, any, did you miss anything on that?
I think you just well covered everything, yeah.
Yeah, so just really talking to the staff, we wanted to find out, gather some information on what the impact would be from that reduction of current core content.
Yeah, it's going to be modeled similar to how five, six work, right? Where they were going to be, like the seventh, eighth would be at the same times, and we were going to keep the block schedule so that like the science is all seventh grade in the morning and then eighth grade in the afternoons, so you didn't have to do as much switching.
Correct, yeah. We try to work within those time limits. You know, just looking for the student opportunities would be generated from our staff, but also some of the other cool things that maybe we've possibly lost through what the increase in the core academic times to bring back some of those other things. It is meant to be fun for both student and teacher when we're looking at this too as well, so. So where to come on this?
I have two questions.
Yes.
One, so like the ACP and the financial literacy, which the state requires, would those be required classes on purpose, do they eventually fail?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And then it increases teacher planning time, but they're also going to be planning for another elective class now, which is more planning anyways.
Correct, yep. We've addressed that from, first of all, we would pay our teachers to create those classes and to have it all planned out ahead of time. The other piece that we may clear that, to your point Jennifer, is we really want them to focus on their core content and not this elective period. So basically, we've said, hey, we want you to spend your time on that, and this is really meant to be not a high stresser. Kids come in and we would assess around, our fifth and sixth grade assessment's around the four Cs right now. So basically, they come in, they are engaged, they complete the tasks that are expected of them. The planning phase is not meant to be heavy grading at all. It should be able to be assessed hopefully within that block of time, so there isn't that extra caseload, and we would compensate people ahead of time to create those lessons days, because it's going to run every other day for a quarter, so we're looking at right around 21, 22 lessons, so. Now, that's the goal. We know some people are built a little bit different, that it's, they, if they're going to do something, they're doing it all in. We would, our intent here is for them to create the courses ahead of time, so they wouldn't have to do that planning, in that they can plan and grade and assess and instruct, keep focus in on those core content areas that they've been doing the last several years. That's the intent, yep.
Any other questions? Then we will move on to the principals' appointments.
The jolly part is the J sport code, so.
It's red and green day, come on. It was fun.
I'm a little more discreet still, though.
What's the G for?
Golly. Wonderful concert, if you had a chance to be here for either one, they were just terrific. Standing room only for the K2 and 34. What Mr. Wushia had the kids doing was just terrific. The harmonizing by third grade and the rounds by fourth grade were just terrific, and they did a wonderful five golden rings for me, and I pulled that off right out of my hat at the end of the concert, because they were just fabulous, so. And he was a little nervous, because I wanted him to sing that whole song again, it's all Days of Christmas, because he was fabulous. That's great. So it was a great time. Got warm in that gym. It was warm.
Yes.
But it was fun.
Can I hear a second?
So the following evening, we had the interview concerts, and our band performed first of all three of our bands, actually four bands, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade and our jazz band. That's the picture on the left. I always go up into the band room and take a picture from on high, so you get a different viewpoint of that. And then the picture on the right happens to be all 160 members of our fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade choir singing a song at the end. The cool thing about both of the concerts, Mr. Jup had the kids do introductions of the songs during the concert, or some of our staff members may have done introductions to songs. Nobody can hear, maybe Mrs. Globick may have done one. But they also had transitions that occurred between the bands, so that there were kids talking about their instruments or other sorts of things, so it kind of kept the attention of the audience, and there weren't a lot of people that left in between. Normally, lots of people leave between, but it seemed like more people stayed around because there was still some action going on. And then with Mr. Jup, the great thing, Mr. Werny, he had his encore choirs singing, or soloists singing in between the transitions, so, and it was sing-along participation, it was kind of fun. But the best part was the next morning, we kept the jazz band stuff all set up, and we had the jazz band playing for our assembly on Wednesday morning, which is really cool, because oftentimes the kids don't get to perform for their friends. And we had a sing-along that Mr. Werny led for us, that was kind of fun, so listening to 400 kids sing non-secular Christmas songs was kind of fun. We had a lot of fun with that. It was, and it was loud in there too. It was really fun, and the teachers were all having a good time with that, so that was kind of a great deal for us.
Some of the things our district is known for is the generosity, and this is a picture of our kids in our principals' council are taking gifts from the copy room and Don Baumgartner's office and other places where we were storing them, and so we could put them around the trees at the entrance. The kids just had a great, great time doing this, and are just amazed how many trips they made from those rooms out to the trees, so it's, you're seeing some of the National Junior Honor Society types right here before you in this picture, so. It's a great bunch. We also handed out, Merton Fire Department water bottles at the assembly earlier in the weekend. Maybe you have one of those at home, or two of them at home, or whatever you don't, but that was, that was a fun one too.
And then this is the, at the intermediate school, all the gifts that were out there. We had some National Junior Honor Society kids who helped get all of that organized for us. And you see there's tables that are set up on the right. Last week, we also had a penny war that was directed by our National Junior Honor Society kids. We did a little fundraiser for the fire victims in California, and we had three other schools in the area that were joining forces with us on that. Needless to say, Merton came out on top with the total funds collected, so you know, that was a pretty good thing. And staff did not finish in the last place, just so you guys know, I know. You were right in the middle of the pack.
How much did you raise, do you know?
It was well over $500 with just like pennies and stuff, so that was, that was pretty cool. So there's a lot of giving. You guys had a whole bunch of food at the primary school today too. Was that for you?
No.
No.
Those were tags on other trees, and we filled our lean's cart twice.
That's awesome.
Writing, it's not always volumes of writing, but I think it's, where the Asians say, less is more. Kids just aren't the same. Well, this is so good. Dear Santa, I've been a jolly kid, I have not been perfect. It's fabulous. It's just so spot on, so transparent, it's just great. And there's a bulletin board full of these. If you have them all, just read the stuff that people, that teachers are displaying. It's really, it's terrific, so. Had to put this one up there, it was a my smore also, and it's, so the kids are, the kids are awesome. More fun, the box tops are big at our school, and each month, this happens, a little bit different to what we've done in the past, but after the assembly, I come down to the classroom with that frame, and we try and get all the kids' faces in that, in that frame to celebrate the box top champs for that month. And then we also take pictures of the kids who brought in the most box tops. I still have to do that this week, and then they get their face in there too, so. Yeah, over 750 in a month, that is about $75,000, because each month's worth of that. I always want to keep you up to date on Makerspace, and I could do a whole thing on Ozobots and the kids designing, and I think one thing I've learned from the presentations here that carries over to our kids is how much work goes into the design part, the answering the questions, and Mrs. Meisner is really a taskmaster with making sure that designs are working. And then the analysis of, oh, it's not working, hmm, then she walks away. Then she'll come back, and the kids are still staring at her. And she'll ask these very thoughtful, essential questions. Ah, it's wonderful. So if you wonder where kids are, where the mindset comes from as far as this goes, and she obviously, you see in the background, she leaves the screen up on the smart board as far as directions and tips and things to do that kids can refer to. It's very handy and it's been great. Finished big, big item.
Absolutely. So 10 minutes before today, I get this message from Mary. Ron got the same exact message. I just doctored it up so it would look a little bit more legible. So compliment from some visitors that Mary Iwansky had today, asking if school was over at 3:50 on a Monday the week before winter break. It was, no, everybody's just working really hard, so it's kind of quiet. And that's a testament to the ladies and gentlemen who are sitting here in the audience tonight for the way that they keep the expectations high year round, that they have procedures in place, and the kids know what's expected of them when they're in the classrooms every single day. So this is from an outside source, somebody who is not a regular Merton person, so thanks to our staff for keeping kids engaged and learning throughout the day, even when it's the week before winter break, so thank you. That's all we got?
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're on to new business. Take care of A, we're on to the open enrollment policy.
Sure. Basically, every year we take a look at what has changed in the open enrollment world with the Department of Public Instruction, and I had Barb take a look at how her procedures have changed each year and how the direction it can use to go. So basically, what you have in front of you is basically an update to our open enrollment policy to represent basically current reality of the state's open enrollment policy. You'll see, you know, instead of handing things in, you know, it's due to the central office by this time, now everything's just online. So all of this is basically procedural things that I just wanted to bring to you guys to make sure that you were aware of, just make sure, to ensuring that our open enrollment policies are up to date with what state protocols and procedures are. So feel free to take another look at it, and then next month, we'll go for a final read and then ultimately, hopefully a final approval as we move into our open enrollment season of 2019-20.
Okay, then C has approved the new tenure facility plan.
Sure. As part of one of our goals for the strategic plan this upcoming year was to review and update our tenure facility plan. Back in October, we'd been, we've met a few times as a facility team and have brought some things to the board, and ultimately, this document is a living document. It is a function for Fund 46, and Fund 46 are dollars set aside where school districts and municipalities can boldly focus those, attention of those funds to facilities. In order to utilize Fund 46 or utilize any monies towards a project, it has to be on your tenure facility plan. So what you have in front of you is a very, very large document with a lot of ideas on it. Sorry, Jennifer. Basically, anything all the way from small repairs to thinking big, and it's basically just kind of projecting out in 10 years. Some of it is cycle stuff, you know, replacing this rooftop if we need to, and this section, you'll see all the roofs on there. But for the most part, it just is a draft guiding document to help the district plan for future faci- document to help the district plan for future facilities moving forward. So again, this document can be updated at any time throughout the year, so if something does come up where we need to utilize Fund 46, Sherry, we're not able to utilize any of those funds until 2020, correct?
Yeah, around March.
Right around March of 2020, so we've got a couple of years yet, because again, it has to sit in there for five years to approve. So again, after 2020, if we want to do something with the money that is not on this plan, we make a motion in a second, if it goes on there, then we can utilize those dollars. So basically, just an exercise in looking to the future, thinking big about what our facilities might look like in the upcoming future. So just looking for a motion to approve the tenure facility plan as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the tenure facility plan as presented.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
What was the idea behind the maintenance shed? We've talked about this project for as long as I can remember, which is probably four years now, five years, but it's on the plan, it's another three years out or something.
Correct.
Is that just based on what we think available funds are, or what?
Well, we put it out three years because then basically we wanted to utilize Fund 46. We certainly could utilize some of those dollars. Ultimately, it is going to take us a good year to determine what we want. We already have some tentative plans back from 2009, 2010, generally, I do believe, were the last refer in the past, but just kind of looking at the functionality of it currently, and, you know, just giving it some good time to really understand what we want to do, either from a curricular standpoint and as well as a facility standpoint, we just wanted to make sure that we're kind of doing our due diligence. But ultimately, in three years, we'll be able to utilize some Fund 46 dollars. Obviously, the, the district, we can decide to go forward with that at a more accelerated rate. We've already done a tentative facility study of where that could go, as well as, you know, we did that at the same time as the possible expansions and things like that, if we ever needed to expand on our buildings, so. But ultimately, just kind of saying, hey, it's functional right now, we have some other priorities ahead of that, and then ultimately, that year three, feel that we might be able to accomplish that too as well.
We could use Fund 41 dollars, huh?
Correct, yep.
Could pay the whole thing with Fund 41 dollars.
Correct, yep. Yeah. And for fund balance, fund 10, also just, so. A big question.
Any other discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. We're on to future meeting and agenda items. Anything that board members are looking to get on our January meeting?
Ultimately, I'll have per state policy, open enrollment seats declared, open enrollment seats for the 1920 school year, and just looking to finalize that open enrollment policy.
Overdue is a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, I was putting the dates in my calendar. Yeah, I thought you were looking for something. No, 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 sorry. I didn't mean to stall you guys.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. We're meeting as adjourned.